Everybody. Call the order. We do have a quorum. I take a motion to approve the agenda and the bits please.
So move.
Their second.
I'll second it.
They were right.
Hi.
Morning, Rich.
Morning. Not a whole lot discussed. All of our construction projects are much complete. We're getting our snow equipment ready to go. I mean, have been.
I'm fine right here.
So they're working on chloride tanks and stuff today. Go. Other than that, just we had, we've got one employee that we one decided not to have to work for us. And we did have somebody else. Not necessarily a retainer, but somebody who wanted to interview the case, something like that happens, we interview them. If you're okay with it. Will accept the, he's accepted the job pending your approval. I'll let him know.
Alright, so need a motion to approve.
I'll be in.
I think that's pretty much.
Yeah.
Let's get the stuff geared up. Next week I have the county engineer's conference. Why? When's it first?
You say three ninety, it's done now?
It's done, it's open. We'll see how we get the flow line and stuff figured out, but it's completed. It's open.
It looks good. It was down there.
It's gonna flow water.
Fantastic. Alright. That's rich. Yes, you have any questions or anything for Rich?
Nope, not today.
Thank you, sir. Alright. And we're still, I guess we're waiting on the way, we're free boarding project, Rich.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything back from the county attorney. I live and asking about what we come up with.
I hadn't seen anything either.
So we'll wait until he responds with anything. Okay. I'm sure they'll ask again this week. Most likely. So I did, I carbon copy you in the email.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen them, but I just haven't seen any response from Jeff, so I didn't know where. If I missed something or what. So. Drainage.
Need to call John.
Jason.
The big chair.
Yeah. We call John. You gotta run that phone, Jason.
And you can't sit.
Sure.
Hello, this is John.
Good morning, John.
Oh, good morning.
Well, we got you on speaker phone, speaker phone in Worth County Boardroom. And you're on the agenda to discuss the DD twenty-one west main monitoring report.
Yes. I guess, did Jackie give me any background on that? I know it's been a while since we talked about it.
I can't remember if I CC'd it on the emails.
Yes.
So. So our understanding had been last year, so it's an annual report. We have to submit every five years by the end of December for mitigation work for the Army Corps. Our understanding had been that Fort Bend would prepare the first report to create a template and that somebody either from the county conservation or Mark Lynn Flott or some other willing party would be able to take that report and and generate an annual monitoring report for the site. My opinion is it'd be a lot less expensive than Fort Bend making doing it. Especially having that template already set up. But down to me, a week or two ago, but I hadn't heard anything, so I was checking in and I guess there hasn't been action on that, so I just want to make sure that there is somebody that can do it. And if there isn't somebody available there in the county that won't make it able to get some staff out there quickly, be able to get that done. So I guess that's the discussion this morning is how do we want to proceed and get this one submitted and then we can figure out what we want to do for next year, hopefully a little bit more lead time.
Did Mark Lynn Flott give you a call, John?
He has not yet.
Okay, shoot, I was hoping he would have.
But I was wanting to give him a call a little bit later this morning. I just saw your email this morning. I my apologies for that.
No problem. And he just happened to come in my office for that mitigation agreement, so I jumped him.
Sure.
I tried, so.
And I honestly think that Mark would be a very good fit for it because that's very much what he did for the NRCS for many years. Is no, essentially what the report requires is what is the state of vegetation, what is the state of the erosion of the channel? And just kind of give an update and then if there's work that needs to be done, put together a list of what things need to be mitigated, or not mitigated, but remediated is the word. And so like I said, I think Mark would be perfect for that because that was his career. But if he's not willing or able to do that.
To do it.
Then, yeah, then we can, we can do that. So like I said, it's just that it's more expensive for us to do it than somebody local there.
Well, we appreciate you passing the savings on us or the opportunity.
I guess we just got to see what Mark, I emailed him what you emailed me. So we'll have to see.
Yeah, and
he's interested in me.
There's a lot more information that I can send them. It's just too much to send directly to you as an email. So once I know who to give that to, I can pass that on and they'll have everything you would need to look at field report and should have everything to set up a new report as well.
So then, do you know the background on the next thing on that mitigation agreement? I passed it out to the guy, I mean, I emailed it to the guys and I have the signature page, but do you can you kind of go over that a little bit?
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, no, sorry, I had a cough there. Yeah, so that that is finally the agreement to mitigate the wetlands from the landowners to that wetland area for farm program compliance. Mark is still being on it. I just can't believe what he had to go through to get that thing done. It just sounds insane. Every time they came to an agreement, they would change it on him again because somebody else would review it. So he finally got that back from them. And so this is the my understanding is from him at least is, once this is signed, that mitigation is legal and those landowners are free to do what they want with those farm wetlands in their field.
Oh, the ones in DD twenty-one west?
The ones in DD twenty-one.
Well, we'll stay in touch this week then, probably, John, and if you get a green light from Mark, or if I get a green light from Mark, can we discuss?
Yeah, and we can even even assist them. The biggest thing is going to be getting a vegetation survey done, which Mark can easily do. If there's some other things he needs some assistance, which we can we can do that, but the report itself is should be a pretty simple thing for him to do. The only thing I'm thinking about is there's, there were some bank pens that major erosion. And I'm not sure if he knows exactly where those are at, but we can get into those pretty quick, so.
Would he need the, or he wouldn't need the key for that structure or anything?
No.
To check it out.
No, he wouldn't right now because it's not, it's not an inspection of the I guess it's just inspection to make sure that that the channel at the upstream end is not eroded, that the structure is not failing, anything like that. So it's just a visual inspection of the exterior of everything. So it's not, he doesn't need to get into anything or find out anywhere. In my mind, you just be able to drive his truck out there. Do his inspection in several spots and then record it essentially and send it in.
See what we can get done this week then, because the weather's just going to keep it worse.
Yeah, I haven't been paying much attention to the weather up there. It's supposed to
It's just darn cold right now.
Supposed to be cold today and later this week it warms up, I think, Tim. John, so.
Okay.
He should be, there's really no major snow coming yet this week that he would interfere.
That's what I'm concerned about is with snow.
Visual inspections. I mean, if he could do it in the next three, four days, it'd probably be good. Even next week, there's more and more of them coming again, I guess, but you know.
Okay, well, that was, I saw your email, so I was going to give him a call here this morning.
Okay.
Yeah, what?
If he's willing.
I can convince him to do it and get him to go out there.
Yeah.
And maybe recommend.
But you know, if anything else out about it.
Recommend a fee for him to.
Yeah.
Sure.
We need to district does.
I think that's it.
And I, okay, and I can send you that recommended fee for him just as a a separate email later.
Sure. Sounds good.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Appreciate it.
Yep. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks.
Bye for later.
Okay, so we got the agreement for mitigation. Need the motion to approve this agreement.
So move.
Alright, there's motions, they're second.
I'll second it.
The discussion. Here none.
Hi.
Post. That motion will carry. Any else, drainage? What are regular? Special one too? Any questions on the claims, Enos?
Nope.
Yeah, take a motion to approve the regular claims along with the special claim.
I'll make that a motion.
Is there a second?
No, second.
All the favor eye.
Hi.
Hi, post. Funds are approved. The reports. Payroll eligibility to salary. Payroll eligibility for secondary roads. There's Tim Christensen, take a motion to approve the payroll eligibility. Motion is their second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? I'll pay right. Bye. Post. Carry. Look at your license. How would it go? Alright, there's motion approved, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there a discussion? I'll pay right.
Hi.
Post. Should look here. Labor management plan update.
I sent you the one for Dwayne Christian. Acknowledging.
Take a motion to acknowledge the manual labor management plan update for Dwayne Christensen. Motions are second.
I'll second it.
Is there a discussion? Here none, all favor eye.
Hi.
Post. Alright, the motion will carry. That is acknowledged. Oh. Patty on there yet?
No, I think they're
They're coming. They're at nine o'clock, so we'll move on then. When Rebecca, Melissa.
Morning.
How are you today?
Good. Went to CBN last week and I'm going to go to a revolving loan fund conference tomorrow. And then I did post the seventeen acres up by the Xenia Water Tower on Lois last week. I have to fix the listing. It's not showing up right now. Always, I was going to send it to you right now. Just to, just to keep it in everybody's eyes and if anybody has any interest.
That'd be great. Yep, you heard of that one too. You heard anything on our sign or?
Yep, yep. I think I'm going to see if I can borrow my sister's truck on Friday and go down and grab it.
Where's that?
Where's it at? It's in Mason City.
Been Mason all the time. If you need, if you need, I can grab it too.
Okay, there's two signs and we need to bring a blanket because they'll scratch each other, I guess. And then I was going to get ahold of Rich and just deliver exactly right where Rich wants it.
Okay. He was asking about it last week and just kind of curious. They got the bases in, they just wanted to know what else to do, so.
It's sitting down there, ready to go.
If anybody would hear out the bracings we need for the supports. Yeah, see if they're going to take a wind like today.
I'll get ahold of maybe Wednesday or Thursday. And I'll, I can, I can be at Mason. I can grab those and get them up. I'll bring them up to Northwood shop, I suppose, so. If that's okay for you, then you don't have to worry about Marwane or vehicle.
We could do it after the quarter thirty meeting on Thursday if you want.
Oh, yeah. I gotta go to North Springs right after that. So maybe after that I can grab it.
Okay.
Along the port already, you go, so. Either way, we'll chat more than I guess Thursday or
Sounds good.
Any else?
Nope.
Alright. You got anything for Melissa? Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Right. People's Service doesn't have anything. ARP. Engage Beast Room Kim to work on her water tower project. Hi, Jason.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Yeah.
Hey, Jason, before you get going, and I gotta go pretty quick. Should now be the time, if we're going to do something on these water towers, to change the name on the roof. Put something else up there for us that tells it it's ours or something. I don't know.
Just a Xenia in there now, right?
It says Xenia Rural Water. But should we have something else that promotes Worth County to develop one up there or not? Just a thought.
Yeah.
Flames.
Sell it as advertising.
Not for sale.
Yeah, I guess.
It's just a thought if we're going to be painting or something.
They're going to be painting the inside, so they probably could be
Well, that's that north one will get touch up.
On the outside.
Yeah, the outside and the inside. Clean and touch up, but we could always get a price for different.
It was just a thought.
Yeah. That's, you're right, though. It's, even if it's just, even if it's plain, who cares? I mean, just get that.
All this cover up Xenia.
Xenia, then.
Yeah. We want Xenia off their channel, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, the cover up Xenia, put Worth on there. It's the same number of letters.
Okay, well. Yeah. Probably looking at that. Good, thank you.
Anyway, so I handed out a copy of our engineering agreement. I got this pulled together late last week, so I did not have time to send it ahead of time. This is for the the water main project to extend water main to that north water tower. Well, it may seem like a simple project. There is going to be a little more to it than that. There's going to be required a DNR preliminary engineering report. One, we're changing storage. Two, we need to look at the existing well pumps to see if they can pump to that north water tower. That's about thirty PSI more to go to that north tower than the existing one there by the casino. And that's just, that's just elevation pad. There'll be some line loss as well, but there won't be much pumping out really. So we'll have to look at those pumps, analyze those, see if new pumps are needed to pump through the filters and to get to that north water tower. Also, we do anticipate there's going to be some operational changes required specifically to the hotels. They have to be using some kind of booster pumps now to get water to the top floor. So while I would say those, any improvements there will be private. It's going to take some communication coordination, telling them what's going on. That way they can be prepared for any changes that may be required here. So the agreement includes three bid packages, one for the water main. Second for cleaning and touch up coatings on the north tower and a third for a complete blast and reco of the existing inside of the existing casino water tower. The intent is, my understanding is that this water main will get put in, will switch to operating off of the north tower and keep water at the casino for times when the north one needs to be taken down.
Yeah, use it. Because either way, we're going to have to put a mixer in. So if we had to put a mixer in the small one, we don't have to put a mixer in the big one, so. So I'd say, yeah, we just utilize the blue one. Use the other one for backup web.
Yeah, you're not going to need both towers for storage. Passive wise, but operational wise, it does simplify operations. A backup. Then one of the other items that was mentioned was also was extending sanitary sewer to the north. So the extent of the sanitary sewer extension to the north as well as the required water plant improvements, if any, is well unknown right now. So we included a preliminary engineering phase to look at the potential service area for the sanitary sewer to the north. Put together the preliminary engineering report for the water system, get that submitted to the DNR for approval. Once we identify the service area for the sanitary sewer, that would be a discussion as far as how far do we want to go expense wise. I know what you had seven hundred thousand is what you had budgeted for this project all.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, that's what they, the ARP committee approved thus far anyways, which we were.
So we had budgeted back in March, three hundred and forty-two thousand for this water main extension itself, just this water vein. Since March PVC pipe has tripled. So we had budgeted three hundred and forty-two, but I do expect it's going to cost more than that. Then we had estimated twenty-five to forty thousand for the north water towers for cleaning, touch up coatings, if we do some logo replacements that would go up a little as well. And then the complete blast and reco of the inside of the casino water tower was seventy-five, one hundred and five thousand that we estimated when we did the inspections. So this agreement is for the entire project from preliminary engineering all the way through the construction phase. Although right now, the construction phase itself is a little unknown, so we're not providing a fee for that. We want to get the scope tied down here a little better. The number of working days, and then we can present to you a supplemental agreement for that. The agreement for the preliminary engineering phase, which is analyzing the sanitary sewer service area, water plant, and putting together the preliminary engineering report for the DNR is not to exceed fees, hourly rate eight thousand dollars not to exceed. Then we have the final design phase, which is for the water main design as well as the design of the two tower packages and then three bid letting. So the fee for the final design, month sum, forty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars. Then we have some right away easement acquisition if needed, not to exceed because we're not sure what's going to be required there for four thousand dollars. Then, like I say, we did not put a fee in there for construction services. We said that would be defined later. One other item on the final design. We don't know what's going to be required for sanitary sewer design right now or for water plant pumping design, so we excluded those from the final design. Get to the preliminary engineering, then we can work up an additional fee for that. But we wanted to get you this now, so we can get some survey going before there's snow on the ground, much snow on the ground. Get that right away, survey it up to the water tower so we can get going on the water main design. Schedule wise, you're looking at next spring summers when you'd like to build this if possible.
I think, I think so. I think we can get it in here February, March, mid letting somewhere in there if.
Subject to DNR.
Yeah.
That's going to be the
Yeah, if we get it slated in for next summer would be
The longer you put it on, further up the ticket.
Right. Yeah.
Get going on it. Block pricing for PVC is the first quarter of next year, I think, and it's going to hit the high and then it may start coming down. I guess I don't know with all this ARP money out there. Everybody's going to do water and sewer projects.
Like, then we heard, we heard Friday with the contractors and engineers. Local guys don't have the pipe. They, they're like limited on what they get. There's stuff they get piped right in. That's dated the week before. It's, it just may get on a truck and comes this direction, so.
I mean, ductile iron's an option too, but that's even worse. Iron, I mean, that's ridiculous right now.
So yeah, and we're going to stick with plastic, it could just be, hopefully by that time we get a better idea of what's going on. And hopefully things have changed with the that stuff. But like I say, with ARP money out there, maybe a lot of projects going on too, so.
I haven't, at least locally, I haven't heard of a lot yet. People are still trying to decide.
There's a lot of counties that aren't, aren't so lucky like us to have a water sewer infrastructure, so.
Do you say lucky?
You said lucky.
Time cheeks.
Oh, so, so that's, that's where I guess we might be one of the few in the area to actually be taking on a project like this.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's our goal is to try to get something going next summer. Get a daddy, because we know that tower needs work. We've already, we've already ruined the mixer because
You're, he's going to fight it again this way, I'm sure too.
Yeah.
Just going to keep costing us more in one way or another, so.
Right, right. So let's get it fixed where it's going to work the best for us.
North tower is bigger, but we don't have to fill it.
Right. Half.
Or even lots of the mean.
Right.
You hate to have too much water because they'll stay along this.
owner operates like he'll just pick up, gets fresh water every day. Anything else on there that, we're just going to get started with that and then. So need a motion from someone to Beast Room Kim, start de-design and phase for our water tower project. Alright, the motion from Mark is our second.
I'll second it.
Alright, there's a second. Any other discussion or questions? Here we done, all favor eye.
Bye.
Post. Alright, the motion will carry. Thank you, Jason. You guys have any other questions for Jason while he's here?
Nope, I'm good.
Alright, nice to see you again.
Yeah.
At all weekends, right?
Right, yeah.
Sure.
Alright. That will move back up to, I believe Molly and Patty are out there. You guys ready?
We're ready.
We're ready for you if you're ready for us. Come on in.
Already.
What do you guys have?
Yeah, I know.
Sure. Dana, why don't you sit over here? We'll kick them out of here.
Okay.
Thanks, Jason.
Okay. What you doing most of the talking to us?
Oh, the cameras right here.
Okay, perfect.
Morning ladies, how are you?
Morning, good. How are you?
Doing good.
Good, good. Um, all right, well, I'm Molly Andrick, Director of RSVP. And uh, with me is Patty Hanson. She is our Dean of Continuing Education at NIAH. And um, I just want to start by, first of all, thanking you so much for your willingness. Jack, you were the first person to um inform me of the changes from the state, so I love Spur Enjoy. Exactly, so um, your willingness to enter into an agreement with us and continuing funding means so much to me and the program as well. Um, all of the counties followed right behind you, so that's awesome. And then I will um pass out some. Just go this way with those. Yours. And then I'm just gonna turn it over to um Patty, and she's gonna share a little with you about how RSVP fits in with continuing that, and then I'll follow up some more details.
So um, continuing education at NIAH um kind of holds or has a lot of different divisions within it, uh, but really continuing education is about um meeting community needs and, and volunteering is absolutely one of those um needs. We currently are rebranding ourselves a little bit because um continuing education doesn't mean that much to people. They usually think of CEOs. Um, but we are quite a bit more. I mean, just like with the volunteering opportunities. So we have created two um divisions under um continuing education, business and workforce solutions, and that's really geared towards helping out our businesses and job seekers. Um, both to help them um achieve their work-related goals, but also to help our employers fill those spots that they're struggling to fill right now with qualified applicants. And then discover you is our life um, life, personal enrichment and volunteer services. Um, and we've been able to um be fortunate enough to get a grant that we've been able to expand volunteering now to other ages as well through our volunteer center. Um, but RSVP is part of that discover you. Um, and we've created a handout because that is a lot of information. Um, and it's included in your packet. Um, but think of us in many different ways and how we can help you. Um, and how volunteering specifically um gives back to the community and is a vital part of the success of communities.
Very good, thank you. Um, so just a little bit of information about RSVP specifically in North County. Um, our volunteers are back, serving in the schools. Teachers um were, welcomed them with open arms. Um, we are experiencing some volunteer hesitancy where some people have just said, I think I'm gonna take another year off or let me see a couple months how the school year goes. And so we have maintained really just being very flexible with volunteers. We want them to um volunteer when it feels comfortable for them and asking students, or I'm sorry, teachers to be flexible as well. And then all of us just kinda keep that line of communication open more than normal. Um, I even said, you may start volunteering and a few weeks into it think, ooh, I need to take a few weeks off. Everyone around me is getting sick or whatever, so. But the ones that are comfortable and um wanna be there are volunteering and um happy to be back. So uh, Mr. Carlson at um in Manly has even wanted to uh expand into North Springs. And um, we talked about that a few years ago. And you know, technically, North Springs is outside of RSVP service area. But um, it seems ridiculous to tell a school, no, you can't have volunteers. There's no RSVP in Floyd County. So we are currently trying to recruit volunteers to serve as reading buddies um for Central Springs in North Springs. So if you know of anyone, um, send us, send them our way. We have like one, maybe we need kind of a critical mass of three or four volunteers to make that work. Um, but the teachers are on board, so it'd be great if we could provide some volunteers over there. Um, COVID really did point out the importance of RSVP volunteers. I think we knew how important they were and teachers as well, but it sort of um just made it even more known. Um, the students really did struggle with reading last year. Their reading skills were impacted by COVID and not being in school and not being around volunteers. And so um shining that light on the importance of RSVP volunteers has been um great for us to see. Um, and the fact that teachers are so happy to have them back. Um, that extra one-on-one support from a caring adult is just critical for student development. And it really points out as well the social and emotional, that kind of side effect of the program that we know is important, but it's kind of hard to put on paper. Um, so in, in addition, we have volunteers, we have quite a few volunteers from North County who uh choose to serve in Mason City as well. So like they'll be a reading buddy um here in Manly, and then they might help at Hawkeye Harvest Food Bank or some of those um volunteer opportunities that exist in Mason City because it's sort of a regional hub of social services. So Havata for Humanity, Hawkeye Harvest Food Bank, um, Cerro de County Public Vaccine Clinics. I think we had a volunteer up here um helping down there. So it provides a, a nice way for volunteers to continue serving in different ways. We also have quite a few pen pals um from North County who are writing to students in other areas, so. Um, we're just happy to be back serving again. Um, volunteers were getting bored. And we were running out of ideas to keep them engaged, so it's, it's good. Any questions? Um, I'll leave you with the letter and then some data about uh volunteering uh in North County with RSVP. Um, our request amount is the same again this year, the right amount this time, Jappy. And um, really appreciate your support.
Yes, we appreciate it very much. No, it's a good thing to try to keep something like this going, like you said, with volunteering and with this pandemic, it's changed how everybody thinks and acts now.
Yeah.
So that's fantastic. Keep a program going like this. Obviously, made your feet, but it looks like you're still doing it, so.
Yeah, we are doing our best.
And hopefully if you guys, I, I live in Manly, my daughter goes Central Springs, so Mr. Carlson, but yeah, if you guys got it in North Springs, hopefully there's a, maybe a pool of people there.
Yes.
Give a little info that would be able to help, I would think.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
If you get similar-sized Manly. Hopefully grab three or four out of there.
Yeah. Yep, we just need to keep pushing the word out. I think it takes a couple times for people to hear something and to think like, well, I guess we could do that.
Yeah.
And so we're hopeful, maybe even second semester.
Sure.
And Mr. Carlson's great to work with. He sure is.
I always wait for the list of early retirees, for like coal workers and stuff like that, so.
Yeah.
I might want to look at that too.
That's a good idea, yes. There you go, thank you. Anything else?
I don't believe so. Can you, can you say any questions or anything or?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you very much, ladies. We appreciate it.
Thank you, yes.
Hopefully we can continue to help, uh, support this.
Yes, it'd be good, thank you.
Right, next is Alan Reese, discussion uh ordinance and permitting.
Hi, Alan Reese, I'm an affected Worth County resident. I would like to speak and support the, the wind ordinance. I did forward you my outline.
Yes. I just saw it coming through this morning.
There's one term I'd like everyone to listen for and have we discuss. It's uh industrial standard. Just, I can't wait to think about that. But I have something to read. Not a big speech or anything, it's gonna be something. Okay, why is the permitting process required? They issued to account for previous problems and avoid issues before they may occur. During the October fourth Board of Supervisors meeting, Mark Crowell, along with legal representation, they bent the truth indicating that there was no way to know during the planning stage that problems would arise requiring Worth County to implement an ordinance. There's been litigation from wind turbine generation, generator impacted residents for at least a decade. All the issues for Deer Creek most likely have previously occurred with Invenity. This ordinance is because of problems that have occurred in Worth County. It was not created as a restrictive device. Once adverse effects were evident to Iowans, they too spoke up and demanded an ordinance, so the same problems did not reiterate. The underground and concrete basis should also be a more transparent part of the permitting process and not just left up to the farmers to deal with the developer. Part of the permitting process needs to be vetting of contractors for reputability. Reputable contractors do not use Iowa's lack of regulations against Iowans. The industry standard for construction is that manufacturer recommendations are minimum requirements involving warranty of marketability. So install the equipment so it can perform as designed. It's not a benefit. Invenity is not giving anything. Setbacks are complicated calculations regarding safety and liability. BS indicators for deception are words like least impactful concessions. Example, balance, pulling in on, just look at potentially largely essentially all Invenity BS indicators. The contractor who might say their initial proposal setbacks with just a starting point, a reputable contractor. Contractors that when asked what size wind turbines might install, they might say it's a mixed bag, a reputable contractor. The contractor would complain setbacks for smaller turbines with much larger turbines, a reputable contractor. The contractor that might say, if we can't make our desired changes, we will sue you, a reputable contractor. Repitable contractors should solve problems that they caused previously, for their putback into the position to cause additional problems. Please watch the October fourth Board of Supervisors meeting where Inven, where the Invenity representative makes these obviously deceptive trade practices. Does Invenity have a pattern of the same activities for other projects? It did not sound like a reputable contractor. Invenity sounds more like an invading force. Invading, or invasion of the combatants aggressively enter a territory with the objective of establishing control and gaining concession. Permitting to build power infrastructure needs to vet contractors the same as Iowa DOT would. A contractor in litigation at other sites should not be allowed to bid, propose, or perform work in Worth County, Iowa. Invenity created problems making it necessary for the ordinance, the council for non-reputable contractors. Fested rights for property and resident quality of life came before wind turbines. Invariance to ordinance lessening standards thereby increasing risk should require no sale clause. So farmer doesn't just take the money, move away, leave the affected residents to deal with the problems. Was the Deer Creek resident able to sell out this turbine property as advertised in the paper? So you guys, you guys have it? So, you know, do you have any discussion, any comments on what I said? Do you have any thoughts on the industry, industry standard?
I do not. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments?
No, not right now.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Okay, uh, moving next to department head discussions. The department head, do you have any comments?
Um, I do have some changes gonna happen in my department. Uh, Margie Butler did put in her tentative resignation for retirement soon as date January thirty-first. So with that happening, I gotta move some supervisory staff around. Um, she will be replaced by Terry Dorsey, is gonna move into the office manager role. Rick Anderson is going to be the new jail administrator. Um, they're gonna start training with them right now. Um, so we'll have some other movement as things go for their backups in those areas, because both of those were the backups uh in those departments. Also, as of this morning, I did uh get a resignation from an overnight dispatcher. So we will be advertising for one and hopefully setting up for two when Margie decides to go. So only other thing I do have, and Mark will probably get into it more with his, but uh, we did do a drill last week, so.
Just about, we're talking about departments. I see the Minnesota Department of Corrections are having trouble like finding people who do their work for them, like a job for your type of deal. I guess where you can come in and apply and almost be vetted that day, it sounds. Kinda, I mean, different concept than just putting an ad out there and looking for, you know, I don't know, a bunch of possibilities to get people to come in and look if they interested a just a thought.
Yep.
Maybe it's getting any easier, so. For no, any, anybody.
Right, let's everywhere. Well, do what you can do, sir.
Yeah.
Thought we had a good thing going here for a while, full staff. Well, we get six months out of it, maybe three.
With Margie, you know, it was expected.
Yeah. That day was coming down, so. Mark Thompson, do you got anything?
Uh, nothing much unless Mark, uh, so maybe he wants to talk about either the stuff we talked about at the security committee meeting or the drill, I think, either word.
You know, if you guys want to talk about that drill more, and you know, I was, I was virtually bas- basically uninformed, which is good. And uh, you know, because I've always thought of that. I mean, it's, you know, a drill should, you should not be informed, I guess. And uh, if you want to discuss a little bit what came out of that, you know, what we're looking at, some of the problems that arose that I guess are part of the old facility, any potential facilities going forward, which would be yeah, I don't know, communication that you had, accessibility to the drill. I mean, basically, people couldn't hear like in hallways and you guys want to explain that a little bit? Maybe that's the best way to, I could say.
Sure. You want to take it, you want me to?
Go, go ahead, Joel. I think, uh, yeah, I mean, Mark summed it up good with the, the problem and, and so I think Joel's found a couple of good solutions. I like the, the second one that he's looking at a little bit better and stuff, so.
Yeah, you know, in, in any situation, communication is of course the, the, the thing that either breaks down or works or doesn't work, you know, and, and in a situation like this. You know, we have the phones for a paging system for the, for the facilities, uh, but that doesn't hit all the facilities. It doesn't hit all the people because you've got people in the hallways. Um, so we are looking at a wireless PA system. Um, I'll be getting some quotes here. Actually, I got a quote here this week. I haven't really sat down and chewed through it yet, but I'll share that with the the security committee at the, at the next talk. Uh, there's a demo that we can do with that. There's some money involved with doing the demo as well. Um, but it's a system, it's a, it's a radio system that could possibly cover all the facilities excluding um the recycle center. Uh, and I, I'd have to look at maybe stretching down the conservation. I'm not, I'm not sure about that. But I know Jackie brought it up. It, it is a system that we could forklift in and put into a new facility as well. You know, we just probably have to add on to it.
That's something we want to consider.
Yeah.
On anything in the future, but definitely.
Any technology purchases right now have that in mind that, you know, we can forklift those things into a facility.
Sure. And what about our Iowa alerts? Why didn't we get a text message or was that not part of the plan?
That wouldn't be part of this drill.
Well, okay. It possibly could be.
No.
Oh, okay.
Too, too broad, too broad. So it would be, it was part of the grave system then?
Well, yeah, our alerts, but we do have a
We have an employee.
Yeah, we do have an employee.
Eventually, but not right at your initially could be doing that. That would be something down the road, so.
Okay.
That'd be something we'll get to, because, yeah. Technology and the generations and everybody's this text message. Technology and the generations, everybody's text messages there. If you have, especially if we get just the employee only list to send that out.
Oh, I mean, the drill went good from what everybody told me when I picked up at the safety. And other than the fact that, you know, somebody was in the hallways, it couldn't hear the alert. So that's, communication is the key. When and if this ever did happen.
We identified some spots we definitely need to work with, but I think it was, the drill overall went really good. Biggest thing is, we've asked for the department heads to send a critique back on whether they like that they didn't like it. What they would like to see in the future, so we can plan more. This really didn't take that much time to plan or put together, so, and I don't think it took a lot of time. If one of my evaluators would have been here at the right time. Then we would have been able to move faster through it, but it didn't take a lot of time for the workday to get this accomplished, and I think we. Definitely made a good point, a lot of people are gonna be more aware, so.
I think the one thing it did show is that we've got a, a good investment camera system. The investing deputies were able to walk through, you know, when the person entered the facility. Where they went with this, with the items for the most part, and then, you know, when they exit. Yeah, I mean, there, we've got some holes, but I mean.
That's better than trying not to use the ATM camera across the street.
Joel and I pulled ourselves out, so, you know, one of the things was Jesse right at first had to take over command, and. At first, he, he's used to me being there. He, as it went on, it went much better with him, so I think we identified some of those things that definitely make a big difference.
That's the whole point of it, right? Find your, find your strengths, find your weaknesses, and. Yeah, I was, I was told to keep quiet, so.
I guess one of the other things I felt that came out of that. Is going forward, whether it's a new building or this old building or improving this building. Talk about there's two boxes sitting out here right now in the hallway, you know, even though they look like a real box, who knows? You know, so getting, I'd say any inventory that comes in or anything that comes in is getting that. Put away so that it's not like an, you know.
Coat hanger too, you, you usually have boxes or something. Don't think anything about something being there.
No, I mean, that's just so, you know, everything is out of the ordinary at any given time, it's just that much tougher when. We get used to things sitting here.
You have so much space.
Well, that's the thing, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at, is no matter whether we were looking at improving this facility or building a new facility, those are things that we're gonna have to take into consideration. As far as safety goes, is how we get that out of the normal daily progress, so that when something is really out of normally recognized a lot quicker, I would say. And it's, it's hard for what we have.
Good deal, guys. Went well, and there's a few things we can, so if it does ever really happen, we'll be prepared.
And then from the, from the Security Committee meeting, we did review the, the security plan for Worth County. And have forwarded that to the Board of Supervisors for your guys' consideration. I think I sent that to Jackie, so she'll probably be getting it on a agenda here in the future when there's room on it, so.
Has anything been changed?
It's really basically just. It'll be an ongoing process, but it's.
And do you look at other people's?
Yeah, I mean, it was. Yeah, going forward.
Kinda looks the same as it's.
So going forward, I would say as things develop and change, yeah, those things will have to stand up. We'll probably be moving the quarter in the meetings eventually, but.
And the training we just went to last week that Brian and I sat through on the webinar, one thing was brought up was recovery. We don't have anything in there on the recovery, which they're recommending, that what they do come in, they're gonna look at those plans and recovery is one thing. They're gonna wanna see in there, do we have things in place? For the individuals with PTSD to go to our E A P management or that, we need to spell that out in our.
Those are things that we can add and amend as we go forward, I would think, but just getting the basic. If it just hasn't not been approved in the past, I don't remember. This is probably updated a little bit, Mark's gone through it pretty heavily.
It's, it's gonna have a few old things that just gets a little better every year. Once, once we keep, as we go, because everything's gonna change, then, you know, scissors or whatever, more stuff, so we're just gonna have to update it.
Just kinda got unshells.
Well, you know, the, the thing that everybody's gonna look at is your policies and procedures. The first thing, in any kind of event, whatever it is, you guys have policies and procedures, and when was the last time?
And it's last updated two thousand and twelve.
This, this webinar we sat through, which was an active shooter one, but they really hammered in that they're seeing more liability losses coming. Through these back at the employer, because they weren't trained, there wasn't a recovery plan, there wasn't this kind of stuff put in place.
All stuff we don't really wanna deal with, we have to. Unfortunately, regulations aren't gonna get us, service management isn't.
Hopefully, it's just hours and hours of training and time, then.
Hours and hours of training and an hour and hours of paperwork for somebody. That's the reality. Whether it's here, you know, and then things we're gonna have to in public health, all those things are just getting. More documentation, and it's for department heads. Kind of falls back on you guys to make sure we have all that, so.
So I will be out Wednesday, Thursday, I'm going to Humboldt, I'm taking a team down there for an assessment to help us, which looks like they want some technology assistance. Next week, just to let everybody know, I did send it out to the department heads, but we were having a firewall change. Yeah, I was hoping, so just a reminder, we haven't had a change since two thousand and six, I think, so this is gonna be a kind of a major forklift.
On Wednesday, we have a major migration on our nine one one system. So there's gonna be a lot of vendors in here, and we'll be taking one station down at a time, but that could be interesting.
Already loaded up. There was something from the recording.
Yeah, yeah.
Sick time.
It's sick time, isn't it? Okay, and I, Teresa would also say, yeah, talk, Kevin, talk with their primary care provider. And I know whatever CDC's recommend, and you know, get tested after five days or whatever. And then up to ten, so maybe, maybe reach out to Jesse Ryers to, and just get some advice from her, but I definitely. Have reached out to their primary care provider as well.
She'll know the timeline and all, she'll know what they need to do.
Pretty printed out list there somewhere, I know.
So it's, it's still ten days, you get symptoms especially, so.
If you get the positive test thing, you just know where they at, ten days from there, basically.
That's what I'd recommend anyways. The other department heads? Supervisor Weekly, Mr. Lowberg.
I had Partners for Children, and we basically, it was a special meeting. To decide whether we were going to financially support first aid mental health. Which deals with youth in recognizing suicide in their friends. And in themselves, and we decided to contribute financially to that, which I think is a good deal. We had North Iowa Children's Alliance, we went through their financial report and did an assessment of the community needs. And then we went through membership appointments and term limits. And Ken Zimmerman from Mason City is a new member on the North Iowa Children's Alliance, so that should be good. Just like the rest of yous, I had the Supervisors District Two meeting, which I thought was one of the best meetings that I've ever sat into. In on since I was a supervisor, and if they had them more often, I'd be, I, I think that would be a great idea. The one thing I need to bring to the board's attention is, back in September, I had a Homeward Housing Trust Fund meeting. And at that time, they mentioned, they told us to bring it up at one of the first meetings in December. The fact that the eight rule electric cooperatives that own Homeward Incorporated. Right now, no longer wanna do it as of twenty twenty-three. They're going to participate in it, but they're not gonna own it, and they're not going to manage it. There's eleven counties that consist of that. Options for us would be making our own Homeward Trust. How, housing trust organization using these eleven, all of these eleven counties or some of them. Or another option would be to go with NiCOC Housing Trust Fund, which Sarah Gordo and Floyd are in right now. But it's something that the board has to think about in twenty twenty-two, because as of twenty twenty-three, that organization, the way it is right now, will no longer exist. Any questions on that?
I'm glad you're on that board. I think the NiCOC way would be the way, that was the first thing that popped in my head when you said that, was they, they already do a bunch of that stuff similar, so it'd be, I think, an easy transition. Plus, it's, it's within the NiCOC region, so.
And I agree with you totally, that was my first option too.
Need to throw that at Myrtle and her crew, but they do have staff for it, so hopefully, hopefully they can get it to work out, at least there's a little time to work the details out, so. But, thank you, that it?
Yep, that's it.
Thanks.
Well, the Security Committee, which we already pretty well discussed, and same as the District Two Supervising Meeting, which is always good. And I attended the drainage meeting. Couple really good speakers. He's been there before, and, you know, basically was talking about nitrogen management, what drainage does for that, and, you know, because it's, everybody knows there's a lot of. A lot of nitrate problems in the waters in State Iowa and things, and clean water, and we talked about that, but. He just highlighted how we should actually probably be promoting tiles, so, you know, there's actually, I guess there's proposals out there for more tormings on drainage tile. I've never heard that, but that's what he said, so, until they figure out water quality. It's basically, my big takeaway from that was, is under this program about nitrogen, how. Actually, wetter ground requires more nitrogen to produce than ground that's tiled, well tiled, your, you. Your usage of, you know, bushels to upon the nitrogen is way less with the need with good drainage, it just takes away that. Excess nitrogen you're putting there basically is going down the drain without tile. You know, it gets there one way or another, and, and, but it just highlighted the fact that, I mean, and it was, I mean, on an average, to produce the same bushels. On that piece of ground that was tiled versus non-tiled, it was like sixty pounds less nitrogen or something like that, and we're getting sixty bushels more break, or so.
So that's, yeah, less nitrogen for water quality, and then cheaper inputs for the farmer too, and, and getting on the backside of the output.
A good, good meeting is always well attended this year, considering it two Christmas ago. I sent her a message, but either it didn't go through to her or not, because both AJ and Enos got it, this was carpool, or whatever, you know. I never heard back from her, so. And by the time I got there, she was off in her room, and I left, last couple minutes, I had another thing to get to, so I did not see her. Good, I'm glad she got to. So very well attended, then, because most of the drainage clerks were in another room, and so we didn't.
Talking about supervisors.
Yeah, that's fine, that's, that's why they get their separate room. So, but now that's pretty much, I guess, what I had.
All I had was the. Yeah, just the Region Two meeting. Yeah, sorry, Enes, it's, it's only once a year, it's, it's, it's really good just to see. To get the networking with other supervisors in the area, and what they're doing with a lot of the new state rules and regulations, so it's. It's kind of a good meeting to go to, you learn a lot, but unfortunately, it's only once a year, so. But, yeah, that's, that's all I had last week, was that Region Two meeting, so. One more thing, I know we all saw some emails this week from NiCOC and Jeff Greve. On possibility of maybe having to go forward with countywide zone. Or this ordinance process, so is that something we wanna put on the agenda for next week? You're, are you gonna be, you know, you might not be available next week, Enes?
I definitely won't be available next Monday. That's one meeting I gotta miss.
All right, maybe we'll go for the week after that, if you, if you think we'll do that, so you have all three of us involved. I'll go ahead and make contact with NiCOC, and then maybe we can chat with Jeff a little bit too, Jeff Greve. But maybe we can have that discussion on that following Monday of, would that be twentieth? So we'll aim for that. If that works out, so. Okay, is there any other things coming up that you guys know that we may all be at? Yeah, you won't, you won't make W H W either, will you?
No, I won't.
I got on my list this time.
Yeah, I, I'll be there, Mark and I should both be there, so.
Is it that, or is it?
Supervisor office.
Guys are gonna sign up for the active shooter class, but should that be on their team, can you sign up for certain slots?
No, that's gonna be local one, and the one you guys put on, because you went through that one. Yeah, put it on.
Yeah.
We should, yes, if we can make it, we should.
There's a morning and an afternoon. You know what you're doing that day, right?
Well, if I put it on my calendar, that's what I would be doing.
Write it on your hand, so you get your calendar, that's what I do.
It's off February tenth, so maybe I'll do the morning session, then after the morning after that. Supervisor.
Who puts on the District Two Supervising, is that ISAC or is that?
They did this year, Zoom, otherwise, it's combination between our, our board. Yeah, Carl from Wright County is president, Sis is the secretary. I can't remember who the vice president is, but ISAC always comes to that, and you get all the, our legislators from the area too. But they, and everybody was there, ISAC put it on just as Zoom option this time, because we haven't done it since eighteen, was the last one we had, nineteen or twenty. So, yeah, so we got, I kinda, we, we would have had it in person, but the Elks in Gerald City, where they always have it at. Has changed things, so they make meals there, for meals on wheels or something on Thursdays, we couldn't get a date booked, and. So they're trying to get it lined up for next year already, so. Yeah, ISAC and their, our. It's, it's usually good meetings, so. Okay, nothing else, then, take a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All favor right. Being adjourned, thanks, everybody.